Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are going to call the September 7th meeting of the Common Council to order. I am going to ask our clerk to call the roll.
Alderperson Tenorio.
Here.
Vitale.
Here.
Weigel.
Here.
Grisham.
Here.
Haas.
Here.
Keen.
Here.
Lysick.
Here.
Frankie.
Here.
Roat.
Here.
Stefanski.
Here.
Ten present.
We have a quorum. Our pledge tonight is going to be led by Alderman Tenorio, and at the conclusion of that pledge, I'm going to ask for a moment of silence for the 13 U.S. servicemen and women that lost their lives a few weeks ago in Kabul.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to item D, we have five public hearings this evening, which we will go through. I am going to ask the clerk to read public hearing number one.
Ordinance to convert site plan improvements sureties from mandatory to optional.
Mr. Scher.
Thank you, Mayor. Our first hearing does a way or makes an optional condition of approval that frequently the Plan Commission imposes upon business or developers proposing site improvements. And it's typically one more step that's needed before getting a building permit. The idea of this is that it really hasn't been used effectively over the years, or really, for that matter, at all. So with some of the larger projects that we have, for instance, like our Six Points, Farmers Market Area, 68th and Mitchell, it works pretty well. But for smaller business, smaller and medium-sized business, it's really just another barrier to getting into business, to getting that building permit, to put your addition on, and what have you. So we would like to make this an option for our Planning Commission, and be that is made at the Common Council, to impose if you so feel inclined. Otherwise, it would not be necessary or required. The Plan Commission has actually recommended approval. The change is really just changing a shall to a may within the ordinance. So it's a fairly simple change, the effects of which, I think, would serve the community well, especially in terms of getting a permit sooner without one less, with one less condition of approval.
That concludes?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the Common Council on public hearing number one? Seeing none, are there any questions from the members of the audience on public hearing number one? Okay. Seeing none, we will close our first public hearing, and I will ask the clerk to read public hearing number two.
Ordinance to amend the definition of a medical service facility and create a definition and regulations for narcotic treatment service facility.
Thank you. Mr. Scher.
Thanks, Mayor. This ordinance has two parts to it. Currently, medical service facilities are allowed within the C-3, C-4, and M zoning districts, the manufacturing zoning districts. What this ordinance does is first, to change the definition of what a medical service facility is, and then to define what our narcotic treatment facility is, and then to then impose, to then require that the narcotic treatment facilities are allowed in the C-4 and M districts, whereas right now, the medical treatment facilities as defined are from C-3 through the M districts. So again, the medical, I'll just read this, there's a lot of words here, but the part, the key part here, I guess, is to look at is this, "The medical service facility definition is being redefined to an outpatient facility which provides blood or plasma donation services, kidney dialysis, birth center services, or treatment of sexually transmitted diseases." So it's taking out the treatment of alcoholism, chemical substance abuse. And the new definition of narcotic treatment service facility is going to be a facility that exclusively provides an opioid treatment system that includes a physician who administers or dispenses a narcotic drug to a narcotic addict, or treatment for detoxification, treatment with a comprehensive range of medical and rehab services. And then Part II is approved by the state methadone authority and designated by the federal government's regulatory authority, and then Part III is registered with the U.S. Drug Enforcement Admin to a narcotic drug treatment for narcotic addiction. So this is basically adopting the state's definition of a narcotic treatment service, and then introducing it within our zoning ordinance, within the C-4 and M districts. Furthermore, as a permitted use, it's going to instill a, or impose a separation clause or a buffer between other, between residential parcels, or parcels with a school, or a park, or other narcotic treatment facilities. So that, in that buffer, we started out initially with the draft of this, with a thousand-foot buffer. And I'll get into the, how that looks, and the different options we looked at in terms of separation distances in a bit, but this, just for context here, is the overall C-4 zoning district area in red, and then the M zoning districts, the manufacturing zoning districts, in purple. So these would be the areas where narcotic treatment facilities would be, would be allowed, notwithstanding the separation that we're going to get into separately here in a slide or two. So just to give you some idea of context, the existing C-3 districts where medical service facilities are currently allowed is about 350 acres of the city. With this ordinance, places like, that offer methadone or suboxone as a standalone facility are, could currently be located in that C-3 district, but with this ordinance, it would take them out of that, of that district, and then put them into the C-4 or the M districts. So there's a supply of about 280 acres of C-4, and then another 1,100 acres of M districts, M1 or M2. And then the little blue triangles that you see there are schools, and then the existing facilities that I know of are, I guess, are Highway 100 National, and then there's another one on Theo Trecker, on the northwest side of the city. So just taking a look at imposing a separation clause now with, from other, from other residential areas, from other facilities, from schools and parks, if we impose a thousand-foot buffer, there's really, there's very few parcels that would be eligible. This happens to be our West Alice Fire Station. And there are some also areas on the fringe, but these fringe areas, you have to keep in mind that while, you know, it would be a thousand feet from other residential within our city, across the border, just north of 94, Wauwatosha has residential. So that thousand-foot buffer here, this eligible area shown here in purple, isn't necessarily eligible when you consider the context of Wauwatosha. So the thousand foot really isn't a reasonable distance to impose with this ordinance. Taking a look at the 750-foot buffer, sort of the same thing. A few more properties start to, start to pop up here, a little bit of C-4, some partial properties, again, not, not reasonable. 500-foot starts to become a little bit more reasonable, you know, but really not a lot of commercial areas within the city, you know, some, I guess, on the fringes again, but one has to be cognizant of surrounding communities and where residential is located. What staff is recommending is a 250-foot separation buffer. This opens up really some additional manufacturing properties on the northwest corner of the city, within sort of the west-central portion of the city, within our manufacturing districts there, and then also, you know, some properties within the C-4 Regional Commercial District, the Highway 100 National area, as well as a little bit on the eastern fringe. So it becomes more reasonable. Again, with this, the purpose of this ordinance is to take, you know, the narcotic treatment facilities out of C-3, then they go into C-4 and the M districts, and then with a 250-foot buffer from parks, schools, residential, and other similar narcotic treatment facilities. So Planning Commission has recommended approval back in August 22nd, and we have received no objections to date. One point I didn't mention, but it would here, I guess, is that this ordinance will not affect establishments like Rogers Hospital or Granite Hills Hospital on 68th and Mitchell. Those are considered hospitals, and they would be exempt from this ordinance. This is really based on just standalone facilities, and that's, that's how this ordinance would work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from the Common Council on public hearing number two?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Weigel.
Steve, just a couple of quick things. So this, of course, doesn't affect existing locations that are already in operation.
You're correct.
And I assume that you contacted the city attorney's office to talk about the reasonableness of the, this distance and the restrictions, so we're not going to find a court challenge on it, hopefully, and?
Correct, right, yeah, yeah. We came up, I mean, we initially started at a thousand feet, and then after, you know, putting it into the geographic information system, it started to become pretty evident and?
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Seeing none, are there any questions from the members of the audience on public hearing number two? Seeing none, we will close our second public hearing, and I will ask the clerk to read public hearing number three.
Resolution relative to determination of an application for a special use permit for a proposed daycare to be located at 11112 West National Avenue.
Thank you. Mr. Scher.
Thank you, Mayor. This property is in a, within a multi-tenant commercial center on 111th and National Avenue. The former location of a restaurant, I believe a Vietnamese pho restaurant, and the tenant who has been employed with daycare facilities throughout her career is now interested in starting her own business, and has found this location and is very excited to get into business and start up a daycare facility. Daycare facilities within the C-4 district are considered special uses, so that's the purpose of our hearing tonight. So the former restaurant, they would be serving children from six weeks of age to 12 years. They have a capacity of 90 children and about 15 staff, it's estimated. The opening date, they're hoping this, this fall, November 1st, and then the hours of operation is indicated, but basically the peak hours being, you know, your first shift and then your, your second shift. But they would also have some weekend hours from 8:00 to 4:00 p.m. The, the overall site plan, they are proposing about 5700 square feet of area, which is actually a little bit larger than that restaurant, so it's actually going to expand into another tenant space just north of here. And they are proposing two play areas. There's an old landscaped area out in front here, which once serves as an outdoor dining area, which will be converted to a small play area for the younger kids, and then the, the older kids will be playing on the west side of the building. You'll notice the parking configuration to the west here. One of Planning Commission's recommendations was to eliminate these parking stalls here along the west side to prevent any kind of turning movements in close proximity to the outdoor play area, and so that will be done. And there's also additionally going to be landscaping around the perimeter of the play areas, along with a barrier, they're looking at some, I guess, decorative rocks or boulders around that, along with some perennial landscaping around the perimeter. Just some site images, aerial views, and ground views here of the future play area on the bottom. These parking stalls here would be eliminated, and then I guess, just the existing, the existing site has some, some things that staff is working with the ownership, as well as the tenant on. There are some refuse areas, refuse containers, oops, behind the, the building, which need some freshening it up, and those will be replaced. The exterior of the building is going to be repainted, and I guess, the lighting, there's some neon lighting above, along the roofline here that's going to be removed, and then just not replaced. New signage will also be installed on the, on the building. So the Planning Commission had taken this up on August 22nd and has recommended approval. We have received no objections to date.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council on public hearing number three?
Mayor Devine.
Alderperson Grisham.
Steve, there's been a bit of turnover in that strip mall, if I'm thinking the right location. There, and this would be a question, are there any bars, liquor stores within that area?
I don't know. I don't, I'm trying to think. I know we have a couple restaurants within this facility, a bakery, like a grocery store, Home Depot across the street, fast food restaurants. I think the nearest liquor store may be Highway 100 in Oklahoma.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Seeing none, are there any questions or comments from the audience on public hearing number three? Seeing none, we will close our third public hearing, and I will ask the clerk to read public hearing number four.
Resolution relative to determination of an application for a special use amendment for a proposed kitchen addition to the Bake Sale, an existing cafe located at 6923 West Beecher Street.
Thank you. Mr. Scher.
Thanks, Mayor. The Bake Sale, their, their philosophy up to this point, they were in business, they started business earlier this, this spring, converted an old office, or a small little office, to a bakery. Their, their motto has basically been to bring all the best bakery from all over the metro area to this location, and then sell it at retail. The purpose of this hearing tonight is that they would like to actually put an addition on the building, which would serve as a kitchen, as well as storage, for prep area and production, so actually being able to produce food, some of their own best, as well as sell the best. So the existing building is about 900 square feet, the addition is 1,700 square feet. It's owned C-2 Neighborhood Commercial Food Production Limited is considered a special use within this area. This is just behind the building where the addition will take place, and I'll show you a site plan of that next, but this is the general location. Beecher Street is here on the north side, an alley on the, on the east, and then we have 60, actually 70th Street to the west. That's what it used to look like, and then this is the new look here. Small amount of outdoor dining in the front, new awnings, new windows, it's been repainted, so it's a, it's a fresh-looking new building. So the hours of operation are really going to remain unchanged, from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. daily. They do have some limited amount of seating within the building to outside, and then the, the kitchen area is really just going to be to support the addition of, you know, production. Just a floor plan view showing the existing area, up on the top, the darker blue, and then the proposed addition behind. The total area of the building will be 2,300 square feet, once the addition is built, and there are, basically, the cooler behind the building now, this is the existing site plan on the left, this is the proposed on the right. There is, there are about four parking stalls behind the building now. There's also a cooler behind the building, those would be encompassed by the new addition, as would the shed. They are asking for a very, a variance on the, the very, for Common Council to vary the setback on the, on the west side of the building. It does meet all other setbacks. Parking spaces are also going to be reduced below what's typically required by our current zoning ordinance. As required now, there's seven required, and I guess, with the, with the new addition, seven would be required, and one would be provided onsite, back in this area here. So that, that setback I was talking about will be on the west side of the building, generally right here. The zoning ordinance, because this is a commercial property, the property of the west is also zoned commercial, but used as a single-family residence, and then what the zoning ordinance says for the C-2 district is that if you have a residential use next door, or the side yard setback should be 10 feet. So they are asking for a, for council to vary that. There is a, this is just a picture of the existing look, so here's the existing building, and then the, the fence, an existing fence for the residents. That fence is about six feet tall, and then that new building addition would be, you know, within two and a half feet of this fence. It will be masonry construction, painted to match the building. It shouldn't be an eyesore, we think it's going to be, you know, a nice look to the building, so I, we haven't heard any complaints to date from, from that next-door neighbor. These are just some images of the exterior of the building, the existing here on the, on the right, and then the new addition on the back, this is facing the alley, and then this is facing the west side, with the, you know, I guess, over the top of the fence, what the neighbor would see would be right up here. And then behind the, the very south elevation, looking back towards Beecher. The Plan Commission has recommended approval. We have sent out notice to properties within 200 feet, no objections have been received to date. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions on public hearing number four from the council?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Weigel.
Steve, inasmuch as this is in our district, I'm, I'm not one to raise the, we're running on a parking issue, but I can tell you that Mr. Lutz's business has been very successful, and we have been getting a little pushback from neighbors on parking, but that's not going to be a deal breaker for me. My question is, baking only? Some bakeries have deep fryers for making donuts, and I think an exhaust fan blowing deep fryer into that neighborhood. I don't see the applicant here tonight, I don't think. Were there discussions about that?
No, but I mean, there would be, likely be a hood within the building, so.
A hood, a hood in a bakery, I don't think, I think people all just smell of fresh bread or cookies or.
Yeah. There will, I mean, no doubt, be an exhaust, you know, fan, you know, and we can, we can work with Mr. Lutz perhaps on, you know, what, which way that should be directed, if it is coming out of the building, ideally, you know.
Straight up, yeah.
And away from residences as far as possible, so.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Seeing none, are there any questions from the members of the audience on this public Okay, that'll close up public hearing number four, and I will ask our clerk to read our final public hearing number five.
Resolution relative to determination of an application for a special use permit to establish a mixed-use, commercial and residential, of the existing residential duplex property located at 1416-18 South 81st Street.
Thank you. Mr. Scher.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an existing duplex, zoned, commercial. Now, this, just south of Paulie's Pub, so that, I guess, the area map is up here, Greenfield Avenue, 81st Street, State Fair Park to the north side of Greenfield Avenue. So just south of Paulie's Pub, if you're familiar, is this duplex here. It is used as a residential duplex, but what the applicant, Mr. Paul and Christine Budiak, the owners of this property, are proposing is to, because it is zoned commercial, it'd like a little bit more flexibility and the ability to use the backyard area for a tent and a stage. The, that's, I guess, the proposed use, and then they can use that in this manner, if, if the zoning's approved, and it would also go without saying, I guess, it would go with saying here, that if the activity, it'd be allowed as long as it does not include the service or sale of alcohol, and complies with the zoning. So the property is zoned, the pub property here, the duplex, and then up to, you know, further down here, this is all zoned C-2 Neighborhood Commercial. So the zoning is in place, it's just a matter of going through the special use process, essentially to get an allowance to use the yard, this property, for a tent and a stage. That's general location between the two buildings. This is a plan view, looking down, I guess, Paulie's Pub again, up here along Greenfield Avenue, 81st Street on the left, and then this is the subject duplex property, and then the location of the tent and stage. You'll see, this is a licensed premise here of Paulie's Pub. That licensed premise does not extend south to this duplex property. So there, again, there can be no service of alcohol from, from this area. This is not going to be a bar, it's not what the purpose of this special use is this evening. It's really just to utilize the backyard area for a tent and a stage, which is accessory, which would be accessory, I guess, to the, to the bar property. There are some outdoor events that take place here. We looked at a few options with the applicant, you know, if not to put a, a tent in the backyard here, what else could you do? Well, you could, I guess, option A, you could relocate the tent to, from this property, and just put it on this property over here. That's one option. Option two is what's being presented tonight as a special use, to have a tent and a stage in the backyard, to get the special use. And then Part III would be a larger-scale, longer-range, perhaps, project to actually raise the duplex, combine the two properties as one premise, and then have, you know, the configuration of a, of a tent and a stage in one, in one larger property. So the applicant's chosen to pursue option B, the special use at this time, and then there are some site and landscaping changes that are, are underway, and are also proposed. The garage behind, on the backyard here, has been resided and reshingled. There's a fences planned along the east property line, both of the Paulie's Pub property, then back behind the duplex, and then further south. And then the stage, just of note, does meet the fire department permit requirements for, for access and for safety. So there has been a notice that's been sent out to properties within 200 feet, that's what this green line is here, these are the properties that have been notified, class two notice, about 33 properties. The Plan Commission has recommended approval, and I have not received any objections to date.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the Common Council on our final public hearing this evening?
Mayor Devine? Go ahead.
I don't know who got first there.
You want me to drink? You go, you go right ahead.
Alderperson Keen.
Does, is the tent plan to stay up all year? Is it going to be a permanent fixture all year long? Is it going to be?
No. I, I guess I could speak with the applicant afterward, but I don't believe it's going to be a year-round fixture. He's just looking at it during, during outdoor festival event type of season, he wants to have the option to, to utilize the tent, you know, in that location. One point that was, the applicant had indicated is that with the location, the way that's situated, if it were, if the tent were relocated, I mean, we did look at that option of relocating the tent to the Paulie's Pub property, the problem with that is that then the sound is then projected potentially, you know, to the east and/or west, in a more direct focus towards residential, whereas the way the tent is situated now, if it's to be kept and allowed on that residential property, it's face south towards State Fair Park, so as to minimize the, the sound into the neighborhood.
And that alley is vacated, right?
Yes, yeah.
Alderperson Grisham.
Steve, this tent proposal, just to clarify, may not be permanent, but being it is a request for a special use through license and health, it's kind of putting the cart before the horse as to whether it would be approved, and that's just a general statement. Secondly, in consideration of the sale of that property in the future, if it is rezoned, could that property then be used as a makeshift automobile repair shop out of the garage, because it's now zoned as a commercial and residential?
I guess only if it would come before council, and council would authorize, you know, an auto repair facility on that, on that location.
So it potentially could be, because it'd be zoned as a commercial.
Yeah.
And residential.
I mean, it's, yeah, it's currently zoned commercial, so I guess if someone wanted to run an, this is just zoning talk, so I mean, someone could run an auto repair shop out of that, you know, but again, there are going to be certain codes, you know, building codes and so on, for, you know, repairing vehicles within a structure, would have to be properly separated from other residential uses, and so, air makeup systems and so on.
Okay, and determination of sound from residents, how is that determined? By, by pushing that back? Because right now, the stage when it was set up, it's set up to face Greenfield Avenue, correct?
Correct.
Now it just would be set back how many feet, still facing Greenfield Avenue?
Yeah, so in the current location is, is where that, they would like to keep that tent, you know, so it is currently in the backyard of that, of that duplex property, and it would, it wouldn't be, it would be in that same location, you know, going forward, if, if allowed by, by council.
Okay. Secondly, well, thirdly, was the Plan Commission informed about the pushback from the residents on this, as far as live music?
Yes.
So that was taken into consideration?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, so the planning commission looked at it, I mean, they were made aware of what the, you know, the existing license, well, actually, the past extension of premise, I think it just ended on September 6th, so, but they were made aware of those conditions that, you know, the license and health committee imposed with 100 decibels at 100 feet, and I don't want to start, I don't want to go on, because I don't, I don't want to.
I understand the format of that.
Right, right.
The last question I would have is relative to what older woman Keen stated of the alley being vacated. That alley entrance and exit still remains open, although it's vacated. How does that work?
So when, when the alley was vacated, half of it went to the duplex property owner, and half went to the, the pub owner, both of which are the same owner, but, so, they, you know.
So we're speaking from 81st Street to 80th Street, that entire stretch of the entire alley?
Well, actually, I think it stops midway.
It doesn't, it just stops midway?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Right.
All right, but that's going to remain open for access to drive in and out, need be?
That's the current.
Parking, because I believe that they use it for in and out parking when there isn't tents there?
Yeah, currently, that's, the site plan we have shows that, that drive remaining open, not being closed.
Okay, and Mr. Boudiaque is responsible for all snow removal and maintenance of that, said area?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the common council?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Weigle.
So this is ordinance, the zoning change would essentially bring him in compliance, would bring into compliance what he's been doing. The stage is going to stay in the same place.
Yes.
I've already been receiving complaints from the neighbors in the apartment building to the east about the noise. The alley, the middle of the alley is the southern boundary of the licensed premises? Is that correct?
That is correct. In fact, let me just go back a couple slides here, just to...
I guess I haven't been there on foot when they've been doing that. So even with the zoning change, drinks can't cross the imaginary line that runs down the middle of that vacated alley, and they certainly can't be on stage for band members to enjoy or anything. That's, I mean, that's, that's if they're going to go letter of the law, if we're going to be really nitpicky about this.
So yeah, the, the licensed premise is, I mean, this is the imposed, you're over the, over the aerial view of the GIS, but the yellow, yellow line with the red dashed to...
The dotted line, and that runs on the middle of that vacated alley.
Right, right, yeah, so these gray, I don't know if you can see, but the gray lines on either side are the, you know, the rough boundaries of, you know, the alley that was vacated here. So pretty much right down the center is the edge of the, the south edge of the licensed premise.
Right, and the, the north edge of the stage is not in the middle of the alley, it's on the southern boundary of the alley, I assume, right? I think.
I don't want to rely on this, but yeah, this is a rough estimate of where that tent sits, yeah.
I understand, I'm, I'm just trying to get things in my head square.
Sure.
You know, I'm not trying to be nitpicky, but, I mean, if we're, we're trying to make an adjustment here, like I said, already been, and, and the question was asked about doing year-round. I can't imagine anybody's going to do year-round, they're not going to do live music in January or February, maybe a Super Bowl party or something, but do you know is it the intent of the applicant to continue regular weekly concerts next summer? Is, is that what's driving this? Or is this just to bring him into compliance for this year?
This is to bring him into compliance for this year, as well as looking ahead to the future, offer a little bit more flexibility for outdoor events, you know, I guess.
Thank you.
With the idea of a tent and a stage, yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Vitale.
Yeah, Steve, I have a question, so, based on the, you know, the way I see it with the planning, changing the duplexes, so the fact that it's perceived, if, if we approve that, so how can you determine at this point next year, if the license and health committee or the common council will allow additional days of operations, you know? I mean, how can you, we can change something, but it's nothing on the books until, I believe, next year. So how can, you know, the applicant apply for something like that to the conversions of the duplex from residential to commercial just as well? But how, how can he, in the future, he can come forward and per se, the council will really agree upon some of the dates of the, you know, by expanding, and that's what, basically, that's what it looks like. So I mean, so, so what's the purpose of doing this now? Because we're going to allow him to have more activities or events, I mean, throughout the spring or summer? I mean, I, I have no idea, really, at this point, you know? For us to, to approve something like that, you know, what will be the future, you know? That's, that's my question, really. We don't know, that's the unknown.
Well, I, I know he's, he's looking ahead towards, you know, this, this fall, perhaps, having a couple outdoor events while the weather's still nice, so.
Yeah.
To take advantage of the, of the, of the, of the season in the fall, and, but then, you know, planning ahead for the next year, you know, he's, he's looking ahead there, too. He'll be, I'm sure, you know, with, you know, the uncertainty of, you know, the pandemic and things, and, and just the fact that when it's nice out, people like to be outside, so he's just taking advantage and wanting to be proactive and create a space outdoors for people to enjoy. The tent, you know, being placed at that, in that particular area, again, the way, way he told me was that it, it projects sound then towards the State Fair Park versus the neighbors, so he's, he wants to be respected with the neighborhood as well.
Mayor Devine?
Thank you.
Alderperson Keen.
I'm sorry, is the current property are just residential now, or is it already zoned commercial and residential?
It's, it's owned, everything here along 81st Street is zoned C2 neighborhood commercial, but yeah, but uses, I mean, in this case, the, it's a residential duplex within a, you know, on a C2 neighborhood commercial zoning, which is typical, I guess, for this, this zoning district that, that happens, I mean, the, the zoning does allow that.
So whether we change this or not, I mean, it's technically commercial that a year, two years, five years from now, if someone could have come before and asked for an actual retail or commercial use, it would come before the council, so us...
Sure.
Approving or denying this, if it's not used for the intended use specifically for a tent and a yard, it would have to come before common council?
Something else, yeah, if it's not going to be used for a tent and a stage, then it, you know, if somebody wants to change it to a, you know, like a office on the ground floor with an apartment above, I mean, that would come back to us for a mixed use as well, right? So, yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the common council?
Mayor Devine.
Alderperson Reiki.
Has been clarified that Mr. Paulie owns this property where this is going to take place if...
That's correct.
The council approves it.
Correct, yes, he does own it.
Have the adjacent property owners been notified, so we can also get their input in this decision-making process?
Yes, within 200 feet, about 33 property owners within, within 200 feet have been notified around this area, around the subject property, yeah.
I see. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions from the council on public hearing number five? Okay. Are there any questions from the audience on public hearing number five? Okay, hearing none. We will close our fifth and final public hearing, and we will move on to item E on our agendas, which is citizen participation. This is where the council can receive information from members of the public during this 30-minute period. Each speaker must announce to the council his or her name and address, sign in on the podium, and limit comments to one statement of no more than five minutes. The council cannot take action on topics raised by the speakers and cannot discuss the topics with the speakers. So is there anybody here this evening that wishes to address the council under citizen participation? If you do, you can approach the podium and the microphone.
My name is Jonathan Wickman. I'm the Republican candidate for governor. My address is 6955 South Riverwood Boulevard. Tracy invited me tonight to introduce myself. I'm running for governor of Wisconsin, because I truly believe that the state is going in the wrong direction. I'm really glad to see that West Dallas is pro-business, especially for small businesses. I've been all throughout the state, and our small businesses have taken a really big ding, to say the least, our bars and our restaurants that were locked down and closed down last year. So I just wanted to come introduce myself to the good people of West Dallas. Again, Jonathan Wickman, running for governor, Republican candidate. Thank you very much, thanks Tracy for the invite, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to address the council under citizen participation? Go ahead. I need you, I'm sorry, ma'am, I need you on the microphone, just so we can all hear you.
Okay, we have a petition going that we do not want a bar at, I think it's 7435 or 7534 West Beloit Road. First of all, we don't like the name, G-Spot, that's very derogatory. We don't like the hours, 6:00 AM to 2:00 AM. They already have a bar that opens at 6:00 AM. Everybody likes how quiet it's been since they haven't, since it hasn't been opened as a bar. There's no noise, no littering, no urinating in the alley or on Beloit Road, no fighting, they almost killed somebody with the last bar, no speeding up and down the alley, there's no parking for a bar. We have had rats, and since the bar doesn't have garbage dumpsters up there, which they never close, we don't have that problem. We want the alley blocked off if this does go through. They always enter where it says the do not enter sign, and there's little kids in the alley, and there's strangers that are going up and down, trying to figure out what we have going on. So we do not want a bar, if that's at all possible.
Can we have, I'm sorry, can we have your name and address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, Judy Schmidt, 2521 South 75th Street.
Thank you, and do you have other people with you that...
Oh, yes.
They can just raise their hands if they want to? So I, I see the council can see everybody in our audience, thank you. Great, thank you for your comments. Does anybody else wish to address the council under citizen participation?
Well, that's tough to follow. My name is Melissa Shrewby, this is my husband Glenn Shrewby, and actually, you are going to be voting on whether or not we can have a license granted for the 7524 Beloit Road. So we came last week and had our, like, preliminary sort of vote, and we were just then told about all of these issues, that we did not, we were not aware of how this bar was managed, mismanaged, and how it affected your community, and I am very, very sorry that you guys had this kind of bar. I, I would be mortified if that was my neighborhood. I, I just, I tried to get police reports to find out what all was going on, and I heard there's like 200 and something calls, and it's going to take 10 days, so I can't even address a lot of the, the issues, because I didn't even know what they were until we've heard this. So that being said, my husband and I have a bar in District 1. It is a successful bar, and it was a successful bar for a very long time, just like Sir Gregor's was, or Gregory's, I think it was, successful for a very long time, and then through mismanagement and whatever else, same thing happened to this bar. When we came in, we were told or recommended that we even changed the name of the bar because the reputation was so bad that no one would come back, and that we would not be able to be successful. We did not change the name. What we did was we changed the bar. We changed our relationship with the community. We have all of the, almost all of the customers that didn't, were said they would never step foot in that bar again, are now customers again. We are not absentee owners. We are there every single day. We maintain our bar, the outside, the inside. Our structure is five feet away, our, our bar is nestled in between two residential houses. Our structure is five feet away from their side doors. We have no issues, no complaints, no problems with the neighbors. The neighbors have children, we have never received a complaint. Our neighbors are welcome to, our neighbors are now our customers. They are always welcome to call us with any concerns, and I know that it was, we are not afraid of hard work. I am not a slumlord, I, I do not want to come in and destroy your community. I know that it was kind of a meeting place for everybody, and I feel like it could be that again. So I cannot take ownership or responsibility for what that other person did. My responsibility comes in in making sure that this never happens again, and that you do not have a disruption in your neighborhood like you did. I understand the alley is an issue, we were going to do something like one way, there would only be five spots, we were thinking about making them only handicap spots, and the reason we were going to do that is because we have opening at 6:00 in the morning, we have a lot of retired gentlemen that come in, and that's, our bar currently is open at 6:00 AM until 2:00, so that, they would be mirroring the same hours. So we were thinking about doing that, then the residents could still use it to leave out of, onto Beloit Road, but there would never be anybody leaving into your neighborhood, ever. They would just be coming in, and they would only be coming in if they were handicapped. So, you know, that, that kind of would help, we don't want to deter people that can't walk far distances from coming to the bar. Another thing is that we know that Sir Gregory had food, Gregory, Sir Gregory's had food, we wanted to like maybe get pizza going again, have something that people could, around the neighborhood, come back and have what they used to. I guess he had fantastic pizzas, I don't know, I've never had one, but I've heard they were great. I know another problem is that there was violence. I did not hear about that again. They do not have cameras at all in that facility. The first, one of the first things we would be doing was install security cameras. Our staff, ourselves, we see what's going on around our bar all, all the time, because we have camera, a camera, TV in the bar that shows us exactly what's going on. We don't allow drugs, people, we know what's going on in the back, we know what's going on the sides, we don't allow misconduct in our bar. And we've been very lucky, because I'm very proud of our bar, I'm very proud of our customers.
I'm sorry, Ms. Shrewby, you've got one minute left.
That's fine. Thank you. So cameras would be another thing, and then the biggest thing is that my husband and I are so dedicated to making this work, that we would actually be selling our home in Manominee Falls and buying not only the bar, but the house next door, and we would be residents of that house. So I would be your neighbor. Anything going on at that bar would be happening to me as well. And I'm hoping that that shows, you know, we, we're going to be putting a lot of money, a lot of time...
Dedication to this.
...into this, and no one has more to lose than I do, because if this fails, it is just a vacant property that I paid for, that I'm sitting next to looking at every day. Well, I think it's a fun plan, where it'd be sports-related, I thought it was fun.
It's a sports bar, that's what it is.
I, I know. So it, it is, it is, it's like games, like sports, it'll be absolutely 100%, it will be, it will be absolutely sports-related, and it will be sports-themed, and nothing inappropriate, there will be no inappropriate signage, anything like that. So it will be Packer-oriented, sport-oriented, I know, it does, it does, once you get it, though, then it's like, oh, that's not that bad, right? Kind of, okay, anyway.
So you're at five minutes, so if you could just wrap up, please.
Anyway, I just wanted to say thank you, and I hope that you take this into consideration.
Thank you, thank you. If there's anyone else that wishes to address the council, please approach the podium, give us your name and address.
Hi, Tammy Dopp, 1303 South 73rd, and I also own Dopp's Bar, which is right next to the Dog House, and I want to tell you, I've known Glenn way before I owned a bar, and then when I, he said he was going to buy a Dog House, I'm like, are you nuts, you own a bar? Anyway, and then I met his wife, Melissa, and those two, out of the four bars that are in my neighborhood, they have been communicado, they've been, we, we let each other know what's going on in the neighborhood, and then when I heard they were going to buy another bar, but they're going to live there, I just want to say that I support them, and I still think you're crazy, but, but I think they're going to clean up what, I didn't know either that all that stuff was going on there, but that's what happens when you don't, are not a hands-on bar owner. So I just want to say good luck to them, and I support them.
Thank you.
My name is Darrell Wagner, I live directly across from the proposed bar site from St. Greg's, and I've got to tell you, one of the big problems I've got is people using that alley to access Beloit Road, their headlights shine directly in my windows all the time. One of the problems when it was one more was that you had people parking and using the west side of that building, it's a paved area, as an outdoor patio, there was cussing, there was swearing, they were drinking after hours with solo cups outside, 3, 4 o'clock in the morning. Then they had metal dumpsters on the east side of the building that they dumped the bar garbage in, again, 3, 4 o'clock in the morning, the bang from the covers coming down, bottles being dumped. This place is, is not a great place for a bar, I think a better use would be a mom-and-dad cafe, internet cafe, a, a small restaurant of some sort, but I definitely don't think this neighborhood wants, there are 52 of us that signed that petition, we do not want a bar at that location.
Thank you. Could we have your address, please? I don't know, you said you were across the street.
I'm 7535 West Beloit.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Teresa Wrench, and I'm three bars from, three houses away from the bar. From my experience that I have seen, being three houses away from the bar, at night there was drunk patrons that were yelling, talking loud, fighting, throwing up, peeing in my yard, sitting in my yard, sitting on my porch, because they were drunk. They, I called the police, either the police didn't come on time, or they didn't show up at all. Meanwhile, you're hearing the swearing and that such. In the holiday, when the fall or the winter comes, the cars are parked in front of my house, I cannot shovel, the... I cannot shovel. The plows come through. The cars are from the bar there. Some leave their cars overnight. I cannot shovel that. When the plow comes through, they shove it back onto my sidewalk. There's noise, as the gentleman said there before, the bottles being thrown in the dumpster at night. They sit outside the bar. They talk. You can smell the cigarette smoke in the air. My daughter has asthma, and it's hard for her. People have sat in their cars, smoking weed, and I can smell it because they're right side of my house, and they have the windows up or down, and they're talking and smoking or drinking in the cars. In my yard, I have found bottles, food, unmentionable stuff, pee in bottles in my yard and on the area sidewalks. My daughter and I, we work early in the morning. I don't want a bar there where I'm afraid to come out of the house, having somebody in the backyard. We have bushes. If there's some, there has been some altercations with that bar that there had. And with the rising things of violence right now, I don't want to have to be fearful of coming out and having somebody in the yard or violence that are going on because there's altercation with other patrons from there. We have dogs in the neighborhood, so patrons are coming out. They, the dogs bark when they hear noises, so you're constantly hearing the barking from the dogs when we have that bar. And then at my age, I'm fearful that I'm going to have retaliation if I call the police on one of the patrons or so. And at my age, I don't have to feel that I have to put up a video camera inside, outside of my house for fear of that, you know, somebody's going to come and retaliate to break into my house. Plus, it's been quiet where we have deliveries to our house from FedEx and that. Now with more traffic going on, somebody could take anything off my porch now, and because I'm on the street, it's easier accessible. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to address the council under citizen participation? Go ahead.
Hello. My name's John Dashick. I live on twenty-five thirty-six South Seventy-Sixth Street. Lived there fourteen years, so I've dealt with Sir Gregory's Pub and one more. One more was worse. But I fear for my daughter's safety in a way because she's three and a half years old, and we walk the alley, and she rides her bike in the alley, and those cars would fly through the alley. When they leave the bar, and you tell them to slow down, either they just ignore you, or they would shout profanity. And then hearing the profanity at eleven, twelve, one o'clock in the morning. And just, it's been so nice since it's been closed. It's been nice and quiet. It's been peaceful. And I just worry about the alley. That's my biggest concern, and, you know, my fellow neighbors and everything, too, with the sound and everything else. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Isaac Hernandez. I live at two-five-one-eight South Seventy-Sixth Street. That's about maybe five or six houses from this lo, location where this bar is at. I'm strongly against it because one, one thing is personal experience. A drunk driver, and I'm not saying he came from one night drinking at that bar that was at that location, but it was about two, three in the morning, come zipping down Seventy-Sixth Street, banged into our tree in front of our house, directly in front of us. The tree is gone. Van flipped over on its side. Firemen have it come. They had to cut him out, bring him out of the, his car. Guy survived. Thank God for that. But it's incidents like that. I got grandkids and, and that alley, we just don't need that. So, strongly against it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the council under citizen participation?
Hi, my name is Colleen Voland, and I have a business at seventy-one oh-five West Greenfield Avenue. And I'm, I wanted to speak in support of line fifty-eight to adopt the state standards for automatic sprinkler systems. It'll make it possible for my business to expand their class offerings. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else under citizen participation this evening?
Hi, my name is Nicole Rensh. I live on seventy, seventy-five twelve West Beloit Road. I am strongly against this, this bar or G-Spot, whatever you want to call it. I don't particularly care for the language, the foul language, the yelling, the puking, the condoms that you find on the floor or the ground. They're displayed everywhere. When the snow melts, you can find red solo cups, everything. You can find it there in front of our yard. They sit on our porch, and they just hang there. They will talk vulgar words to each other. There will be arguments, yelling, cussing, you name it. They'll have banters that we, like my neighbors mentioned, the dogs will bark because they hear movement, you know, they're protecting their families. But once they start barking, they don't stop until they leave. You'll have people knocking on their windows, which is inappropriate at two in the morning. I start early in the morning. I shouldn't be hearing this. I shouldn't be hearing anything. We have kids in our neighborhood. They'll be coming down the aisle, the alleys. It's not right. We want future kids here. And they're, they come down drunk, down our aisles. So, I strongly don't agree with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to address the council under citizen participation this evening? Okay, seeing none, we will close citizen participation. And moving to item F, our standing committees will be meeting during recess, and those room numbers are on page two of your agendas. Moving on to item G, the mayor's report. Just have a couple of things this evening. A few weeks ago, as I'm sure a lot of you are aware, we had some incredible storms come through the city. And I've been publicly thanking the crews and everybody involved that helped with cleaning that up. The city lost over a hundred twenty trees, and the public works department got around one thousand calls for service. Now, I'm sure some of those were duplicate calls about the same tree, but our crews were stretched very thin. And there were also some neighborhood groups and some organizations that were out helping clean up with their chainsaws. So, the community and the city really came together, and I just want to commend everybody who was involved in taking care of that. It sounded like it went right down Beecher, pretty much, from Highway one hundred to about Sixty-Eighth Street. And a lot of the damage you might have seen driving through the community was along that corridor. But I just want to thank our forestry crew, our streets and sanitation crew, everybody in public works, and everybody who just helped out in getting that cleaned up in what I would consider a very timely manner. And the other thing I wanted to bring up tonight is that a couple of Fridays ago, there was a grand opening or ribbon cutting for a new restaurant in town, which you may or may not have heard of, but it was called The Wrestling Taco. And it is at sixteen-oh-six eighty-fourth Street. And it is a Luca Libre Mexican wrestling theme Mexican restaurant. And they have very good food. They're in that strip mall on eighty-fourth Street in about Lapham. So, if you want to go try a new place, they are open and would be happy to see you. That does conclude the mayor's report this evening. Moving on to item H, do we have any alderpersons' reports?
Mayor Devine.
Alderperson Keen.
I just wanted to actually thank Mr. Quintel Robinson, the owner of Legacy Cuts at ten forty-one South Eighty-Fourth Street, Eighty-Fourth and Washington. He actually reached out wanting to do a bookbag drive. He's actually a new business owner and already asking how he can be involved in the community. So, we were able to fill over sixty backpacks, had bounce houses, barbecue, face painting. And I just really wanted to thank him and all the volunteers for such a great event and helping out in the community.
Thank you. Any other alderpersons' reports?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysik.
I move for approval of the minutes of August third, two thousand twenty-one, and June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one, comment counsel.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any changes or amendments to those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Moving to the standing committee reports.
License and health.
I think.
Mayor Devine.
Oh, alderperson wrote.
If we could separate out item eleven and item fourteen. Item eleven, just on a separate vote, and item fourteen, I would like to refer back to Committee for Site and Landscape and Screening Review and Engineering Review.
And that will be this evening?
I would like to, no, we'll have to give them time to
Okay.
To their report.
Okay.
I guess it'll be at the next regularly scheduled License and Health meeting.
Okay.
Which is the fourth.
Fourteenth.
Yeah.
Yeah, Alderman wrote, I could, I could second your wishes, your emotion, you know, to, to bring, you want to bring item fourteen back to Committee for further discussions?
Yes, and, and eleven as a separate vote.
Separate vote.
So, let's move fourteen first.
Okay, so it's been moved.
And then seconded by Alderman Vitale.
Yes.
Is there, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item fourteen is sent back to committee.
Mayor Devine, I didn't vote aye, I didn't vote aye on fourteen, only because can we have discussion on that this evening? It's not just site plan, but being we have the audience that we have.
Turn over to the city attorney.
Mr. Mayor, if an item's referred back to committee, the committee can handle it tonight in any manner the committee sees fit, including further discussions or holding it to the next meeting.
Okay, and in that forum, if we so chose to hold after the discussion, we could do that?
Yes, it's back, essentially, it's back in, before the committee as though nothing had been done, and you're starting over with your discussions right now. That would be what would happen if referred back to committee.
Okay, and I know that there's a motion on the floor, so of no disrespect, we can vote on it as it sets. Otherwise, I would be up for discussion this evening, but I don't know how that goes protocol-wise. I think the vote has to go according to.
Fourteen's going to go back to committee, and then we vote on it?
I think it's already referred to committee.
Yeah, so it's referred to committee.
So, it's questioned up to the chair if.
Okay, so it's up to the chair whether we would have discussion on it this evening?
Well, I don't think we need any further discussion. So, once, we was vote on it to bring forward to the License and Health Committee meeting. But again, you know, when you have a neighborhood and you have fifty-two.
Well, Alderman Vitale, let's stick on the motion before we opine on the merits.
I just want to clarify that.
Yeah, no, I understand what you're saying. I just want to make sure we know where this is going and when before we debate it.
Mr. Mayor.
Attorney Decker.
The motion to refer to committee had already passed, so this item's already in the committee level. I treated Alderman Grisham's comment as a point of information, so
Thank you.
I don't think there's any further reason to discuss this. It'll have to be done at committee level.
Okay.
Yeah, we can, we can, yeah, that's fine.
Thank you. Okay, then, Madam Clerk, on what's left on our agenda, and then separate action item eleven.
Mayor Devine, I would also like item thirteen acted upon separately.
Okay. Any other items for separate action off the License and Health Committee this evening?
So, we can go ahead with item eight.
The balance, if, Madam Clerk, do you want to read that out?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Ten.
Clerk's got it.
You got it, right? Try. The License and Health Committee recommended approval of items nine, ten, twelve, and sixteen. They recommended denial of item fifteen.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Vitale.
I move for approval of the recommendations of the License and Health Committee meeting.
Thank you. Any other discussion on those items? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. And now, we have item eleven in front of us.
The committee recommended approval of item number eleven.
Okay. Alderman Vitale, do you want to make the motion?
Yeah, I make a motion based on the voting of the License and Health Committee meetings.
On item eleven. Any discussion on item eleven?
Item eleven.
I have a question, Mayor Devine.
Alderman Haas.
Yeah, what was the vote in License and Health, and if there were dissenters, what were their reasons?
I was the dissenter. I, I just, neighborhoods. I've, I've talked to, I went to two non-sanctioned city block parties probably two weeks beforehand, and they were aware of it, and they said, pretty much like, short version, how many liquor stores do we need in West Alice? And I really couldn't do it on proximity to the school because it's a six-hundred-foot rule, door to door, but I think they're less than six-hundred feet from door to quarter-mile track.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysik.
Just want to point out that I grew up in that neighborhood, and there's been a liquor license in that establishment since the nineteen-sixties. It's been vacant for a couple of years because the owner of the Parthenon retired. His son took over the business and moved it to Eighty-Fourth and Greenfield to a bigger, newer store. And I have no problem with the liquor license being at that establishment. There's never been any problems there, and I don't anticipate any problems in the future. The applicant has experience. He's already owns a liquor store in Milwaukee. There's been no problems there. And so, I would recommend a yes vote on this.
Mayor Devine.
Alderperson Grisham.
I have to mention that the gentleman who wants to open this business came forward with a very well-thought plan. Not only did he discuss what he wanted to do with this operation, and as Alderman Lysik said, is an experienced business owner, he came with a presentation that he actually went to seventy-plus neighbors in the neighborhood, got signatures, took the time to speak with every individual neighbor that he could speak with, and they all signed that they were in favor of him coming to this location. So, one of my greatest concerns and questions that I presented was the proximity to the school, which is Frank Lloyd Wright. I believe Alderman wrote, and I disagreed on the distance to the track and field, which where they do sports is on the backside of the school, and nowhere really near the, the proposed business itself. But this is going to be strictly a liquor store. I would have had reserve or more reservation if there was, you know, food, beverage, things like that, that kids would want to come in for that. Obviously, it's liquor, so they're not going to be able to go in, but there's going to be no groceries, no attraction for children to come in, even the middle schoolers. So, I, I was very pleased with the presentation, and I feel very confident that we have a very welcomed person in our community for this business.
Thank you. Any other discussion on item eleven? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Alderperson Tenorio.
Aye.
Vitale.
Aye.
Weigel.
Aye.
Grisham.
Aye.
Haas.
Aye.
Keen.
Aye.
Lysik.
Aye.
Ranky.
Aye.
Wrote.
No.
Stefanski.
Aye.
Nine in favor, one opposed.
Nine to one, motion carries. And now, we have, I'll ask to read out item thirteen.
The License and Health Committee recommended denial of item number thirteen.
Alderman Vitale, you want to?
Yeah, I, I will.
Move the motion?
I, I make the motion to, to rein, not reinstate, but have the applicant come forward.
Oh, can't do that.
Again, I, I believe we could do that. I'm requesting that we could do that.
No, you have to actually move the committee's report at this point to the chair, and that was to deny.
Yeah, I mean, I, based on what I seen, you know, we.
Let's get the motion in front of us before we debate.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay, so that was a motion?
It was a motion, yes.
Okay. Alderman Vitale, you want to speak on the motion?
Yeah, I speak the motion based on the, let me, based on the fact that the applicant, you know, many other gas stations, they do provide a B liquor license. So, I, I'm start kind of sometime thinking or be concerned for us to start denying some of the people, you know, with that same type of a business for B license. And then we have been issue a license already for gas stations for B license. That, that's one of my biggest thought that has been coming across my mind, you know. Is that really fair or appropriate for the decision of denial, you know? Of course, I've been the chairman of the License and Health, so I mean, I, I felt to deny that. But then throughout the week, you know, and I was thinking about what really makes the difference that we denied one reliable business person that, you know, something that he would probably do his good job, and we are kind of, and some people already have that type of a license. That, that's one of my major questions that I concerned about it, you know. would probably do a good job and we are kind of, and some people already have that type of a license. That, that's one of my major questions that I concerned about it, you know?
Mayor Devine.
Thank you. Alderperson Grisham.
Okay, I just want to give a backstory to the gentleman who is looking to have the beer license. One of the questions that I asked is the proximity of his business to any other liquor stores or other places that sell alcohol. And from my understanding, there's a liquor store adjacent or right behind it. So, that was one of the reasons that I voted against it and I'm not in favor of it. However, I do want to make note to what Alderman Vitale stated. I don't want our committee to be looked at that we are just giving a blanket no to anybody who owns a gas station. It's not reasonable, that's not our job. Our job is to assess the business and, and it's, it's participation in the community and whether they should have that license or not and be responsible. So, I'm not going to say that I vote against every gas station. This particular one, I did for that specific reason of it having a liquor store so close. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysik.
I'm going to support this particular license. It's a beer license only at this particular location. We have granted other service stations in the, in West Alice full liquor licenses or beer-only liquor licenses. Quick Trip has one, there's a station on 96th and National that has a beer license. I see nothing wrong with it. All of our neighboring, or most of our neighboring communities allow service stations to sell at least beer or beer and liquor at their stations. You go to New Berlin, you can get them at a lot of stations. Greenfield, it's, it's not an uncommon thing. It's a convenience for people. You stop, you get gas, if you want to take home a six-pack of beer, I don't see anything wrong with it, so I'm going to support this.
Thank you.
Mayor Devine.
Alderperson Keen.
If someone from License and Health, was there a recommendation on how many coolers he was planning on having?
No, there wasn't even any discussion on that, to be honest with you. Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion?
Mayor Devine, one quick question. I don't know if anybody has the answer. Will there be any substantive remodeling of the business as in improving the taxable value of the property and will there be new employees added based on this license?
Come up to the microphone if you can, please.
Hello, everyone. My name is Chazmeet Kang. I, my address is 1549 Cambridge Court in Hubertus. So, basically me and the other gentleman, he's my partner, so we have 10-plus year experience. We own over two dozen gas stations in Wisconsin. So, and we have no problems in the 10 years of experience we had. So, even in this case, we are new business owners for this particular property we're talking about. Yes, we do have plans, coming back to your questions, to improve. A remodel plan is coming to refresh the store, putting new car washes need to be updated and everything else. So, like we had discussion today, we're not asking for a special permission or special use, we just want to be on the, just to be fair, you know, just other gas stations and other similar businesses, about five to six other businesses are currently hold classy license. So, we just want to be on the same playing field and like we said, it's, it's a convenience thing. And the liquor store which we have right next to us, sometime they don't open until 10 or 11 o'clock in the morning. So, you know, a lot of, we have a lot of customers who work overnight, you know, they come in the morning, get gas, grab a pack of beer, because that's the time they're going home. So, there's nothing wrong with that. And like I said, we, we will be more than happy to continue the conversation if you guys have any questions, but like I said, in 10 years of experience and two-plus dozen gas stations we own, we never had any trouble.
Okay, on, on the remodel.
Yes.
And I'm glad Steve's still here. Are we talking about a substantive remodel that would require a site and landscape plan? And I guess, Steve, are they, do you know if they're currently in compliance? Is there anything, anything on a wish list there that we'd want better landscaping or?
This is, this is the formerly Poor Richard's location. Yeah, so that, that station is one of the newer stations, I guess, in terms of West Alice gas stations. It was built, remodeled, I would say probably maybe 10, 15 years ago. It has some nicer masonry exterior materials, landscaping and so on. In terms of site and landscaping compliance, it is generally consistent, I would say, you know, if there is some freshening up needed that can be done through our code enforcement, but otherwise it, it appears to be in compliance with our, our site and landscaping architectural plans.
I appreciate they'd be able to come up with the answer right here when it wasn't actually going to be considered on the agenda, so, thank you.
And just go back to my question, how many coolers were you planning on having for beer?
So, currently it has 12 doors for beer will be, it'll be just an addition to about three doors. We're going to add it.
Three doors, okay.
Yeah, to it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, if there are no other questions, I am going to ask.
This is to deny.
Yes, I'm sorry, the motion is to deny per the committee report. Yeah, thank you for that, I was going to clarify that and then I forgot. The motion is to deny, so if you do not want them to get a license, you would vote aye. And if you want them to, you would vote no. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Alderperson Tenorio.
No.
Vitale.
No.
Weigel.
Aye.
Grisham.
Aye.
Haas.
Aye.
Keen.
No.
Lysik.
No.
Ranki.
Aye.
Roat.
Aye.
Stefanski.
Aye.
Ten, six in favor, four opposed.
The motion to deny is approved. Okay, that concludes License and Health. We are on item K.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysik.
If there's no objection from the alderpeople, I would move that the consent agenda be approved as submitted by the clerk.
Second.
I think I just ask if there's any objection. And I don't see anyone objecting, so the rules are suspended. Any, any separate action on the consent agenda this evening? Give you a minute because there's a lot. Okay. If there is no objection on that, then I will ask the clerk to call the roll on the consent agenda.
Alderperson Tenorio.
Aye.
Vitale.
Aye.
Weigel.
Aye.
Grisham.
Aye.
Haas.
Aye.
Keen.
Aye.
Lysik.
Aye.
Ranki.
Aye.
Roat.
Aye.
Stefanski.
Aye.
Ten in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysik.
I move that we stand in recess until conclusion of the committee meeting.
Second.
There's a motion and a second by Alderperson Ranki. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are in recess.